Welcome to the Town of Eastchester zoning board of appeals meeting for November, tonight being November 15, 2022. We begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, while we're getting settled in, I usually take this time to go over some of the ground rules for our meetings. As a point of order, since we've been out of the pandemic process, no new correspondence is accepted on any applications after the close of any public hearing. So, the public has, in some cases, has submitted correspondence or emails in advance, and of course, the public will generally have an opportunity to be heard after it's closed, and that's it. Nothing submitted thereafter. Also, we follow Roberts Rules of Parliamentary Order, which is, I guess, Cliff Notes version of that, is that people will have an opportunity to speak when they're recognized by the Chair, and decisions are made by either motion or resolution and a vote. So, since we're on that topic, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 13, 2022 meeting, all except Mark DiMarco having been present. Is there a second to my motion?
I'll say.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
I also make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 11, 2022 meeting, all except Joe Miller having been present. Is there a second?
One second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
I also make a motion to adjourn the December meeting and that calendar to the January 2023 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to call the roll as well tonight. Before we do that, I just want to mention two things. Number one, we have five matters on for resolution, which will be decided tonight. We have six items of new business on. Just so, in conjunction with Roberts Rules of Order, generally what happens with new business, the application has been marked submitted. So, that package and the documentation contained within are part of the public record. So, you won't need to read your application. You can if you want, but for the sake of expediency, it's not going to help the application. I generally ask an applicant to just summarize what your application's all about. The five-part test has been reviewed by the board members individually. In many instances, I've either visited the site or reviewed it on Google Earth. Also, when an applicant presents, the board will generally have an opportunity to ask questions or make comments, and then it'll be open to the public. And after that, the applicant will have an opportunity to reply, and then it'll be back to the board for questions and comments. So, that's the process. So, before I go into the resolution calendar, on the roll call, let me know that you're present and you're ready to proceed. Anyone who's not here, it'll be Mark DeJern for the January meeting. Number one is 22-41. That's 1091 California Road.
Yes.
And ready to proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. Number two, 22-38, that's 34, is that 34? Yes, Stratford Road?
54.
54. Is the applicant here? Ready to proceed?
I am.
Okay. Number three, 22-42. That's 885 California Road.
Yes.
Are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. Number four, 22-43, Overlook Avenue?
Yes.
Ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. 22-44, 118 Park Avenue. Ready to proceed?
I'm here to architect this, but I can vouch for that.
Okay. Well, there's four other matters before you, and if he's still not here, I'll call six before five. And if not, we'll hold him for detention next time. How's that? Okay. Number six, 22-45 Kids Corner. Ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. So, let's get to the resolution calendar. Number one, I make a motion to approve application 22-33, Webster Road. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, to the vote. Mr. Cahalan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Nerzia?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
I vote yes. That application has been approved five to zero. Item number two, I make a motion to adopt a negative declaration for application 22-34, Wooden Fire. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, to the vote. I make a motion to approve that very same application, Wooden Fire. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Is there a second, Mr. Cahalan?
Yes.
To the vote, Mr. Cahalan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Nerzia?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
I vote yes. That application's been approved five to zero. Number three, I make a motion to adopt a negative declaration for the Chow Restaurant application. Is there a second to the negative declaration?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. As far as the vote is concerned, I make a motion to approve the Chow Restaurant application. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. DiMarco, to the vote. Mr. Cahalan?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Nerzia?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
I vote yes. That application's been approved four to one. Item number four, I make a motion to approve the application for Montgomery Avenue. Is there a second?
Yes.
Mr. Cahalan, to the vote. Mr. Cahalan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Nerzia?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
I vote yes. That application's been approved five to zero. Last item on the resolution calendar is Uwet Avenue. I make a motion to approve application for Uwet Avenue. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, to the vote. Mr. Cahalan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Nerzia?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
I vote yes. That application's been approved five to zero. Okay. First item on for new business. This is California Road, and one, please, name and address for the record, and this is a area variance to permit a driveway width that exceeds maximum allowable.
So, I'm Joseph Blue Hamer, architect for Johnson and Murray Billups, forms of 1091 California Road. So, what we're proposing here is to widen the existing driveway beyond the permitted width. Right now, the driveway is 16 feet wide. Good. So, right now, the current driveway is about 16 feet wide. It lines up with the existing garage door. We're proposing to widen it just to the width of the house, which would be about 23 feet, 4 inches, plus or minus an inch. We're going to drive, bring the driveway straight out to the road. We're not going beyond the width of the house, the width of the garage where it bumps out in the front of the house. In this project, we're also going to redo the front steps and stuff, but it has nothing to do with the variance that we're requesting.
Okay. And thank you for your presentation. At this time, we usually go to the board for questions, but I just want to highlight a couple of points. Number one, this property is directly across from a park.
Correct.
So, there's no parking, and I've noticed from my view on a couple of occasions, there's also no parking on the street to speak of. Okay?
I think you're legally allowed to.
Yes.
But it's not very safe.
Okay. So, having said that, let me go to the board with any questions or comments. Mr. Cahalan, any comments or questions?
Well, yeah, when I look at this property, you can fit four cars in the driveway, can you not?
Right. The standard parking space is nine foot by 18 feet, so that would be 18 feet a minimum. You know, and you go to any parking lot anywhere, you park nine feet, in a spot nine feet next to another car.
I'm well aware, sitting on the board for years.
Yes, understood.
But it's got the requirements.
You can technically fit two cars in there. They're very close together. You can't get out without stepping into the grass on one side or the other.
But according to the pictures you took, I could fit four cars in that driveway staggered. Could I not?
Staggered?
Staggered. The way you show it right now, you could put four cars in that driveway.
Yeah. Or not increasing the length, we're just increasing the width so we have some elbow room to get in there.
I understand, but four staggered cars would still get you four parking spaces, and you could still get out of the cars comfortably.
Within the property itself, you would only be able to stack two cars.
Two?
Two. And then the rest of it is the city right of way. So, if we were coming to the zoning board for parking variance or something like that, you wouldn't have granted us a variance to park cars in the city right of way, only within the driveway and the property. So, on the second drawing, on page eight-two, I showed four cars in the driveway, 9 by 18 typical parking space. So, you can, yes, park in the city right of way, and you could fit a third car there.
My other question is, of course, we've been asked to extend driveways all over town, and what I worry about is the precedent. So, you may think that three feet is not much of an ask, but that's three feet all over town. And I make the board aware of that, that it's not that simple. We have other areas in this area where we've been asked to expand the parking, and we did it. So, as a matter of consistency, I think we should keep that in our minds making this decision. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Cahalan. Mr. Miller?
No questions.
Mr. Nerzia?
No questions.
Mr. DiMarco?
Nothing.
I don't have anything. I make a motion to open the matter to the public for public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Back to the board. Mr. Cahalan, anything further?
I said my piece.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Nerzia?
Nothing.
Mr. DiMarco?
Nothing.
The only thing I have is that, to my satisfaction, it's like you've met the five-part test for, to me, not being insubstantial, consistent with the neighborhood, but I'm one. Vote. I do make a motion to adjourn this application for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number two, 22-38, this is the Stratford Road application. If you can give me your name and address for the record, and please proceed.
Good evening. Michael Finelli, 97 Bolden Lane, Maybach, New York. I'm the architect for the owners, John and Daniela Chirello. They were not able to be with us this evening, so hopefully I'll just kind of give you a quick background on what we're doing, and then I'll be happy to take any questions. The house is, this is the house here, the center of all the photographs. The rendering down below is what we're proposing to do to the house, due to the fact that the house as it exists, it's got a four-foot kneel across the front of the house, which gives us these little dormers. The owners want it to have a standard eight-foot ceiling in the house. Just touching that roof in any way, shape, or form increases the level of nonconformity because we sit in the left-hand setback, which is 7.6 feet. So, one of the variances we're looking for exists, wasn't created by us. Anything we do will trigger us to be in front of this board. The fact that the square footage also exists within the house, anything under seven feet technically doesn't get counted in square footage. As soon as we raise that to seven feet, all of that square footage on the second floor counts. So, that bumps our number. That's why our numbers say it's about 500 square feet we're adding to the house, although we're only adding 178.4 true square feet in the form of a bedroom on the back of the house. That being said, that triggers the second variance. The owners would like to put a pool in the backyard. They're very limited, based on a two-car garage that's in the back and the rest of the natural site, so we're requesting two setbacks for six foot to the property lines versus 10 feet. I did a little research of the building department, and to precedent, I just wanted to kind of pull out this little diagram. Our property is the red square here. The immediate property to the left, number 56, was granted a variance back in 2012, and it actually has a floor area of 2977, which is about 200 square feet more than we're asking for. The three properties immediately to our right all have side yard setbacks similar to us. The house was built, I guess everything was shifted to one side so all the houses kind of fell the same way, and they vary anywhere from 5.3 feet to 9.88, 8.10, with one of the sides. One of the sides is always a little tighter than the other, similar to what we have. The reason I bring this up is I wanted to show that there is precedent already there for what we're asking for, and we're not asking for anything. We believe it's the minimus, and we're asking for your approval. So, I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you for your presentation, and the additional homework of the visuals was helpful. Mr. Cahalan, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with the square footage, you know, based upon the way the code is written. I get it. It's 180 square feet only because of the roof. My problem is more in the backyard. You were asking for 40% variance on that six foot. Can't you make this pool two feet to that?
So, as of right now, the plan is to look for a 15 by 30 foot pool. This is the smallest they want it to go, but I told them, if we need be, if it needs to be shrunk down a little bit, we're willing to give a little on that to help increase those setbacks. At the end of the day, we are asking for a lot, so we're willing to work with the board, but we figure we would ask for what we want first, and then let's see where we can go from there.
Yeah, my father always said, you don't ask, you don't get. So, I don't want to give you this. So, I'll be honest with you. I think that's, you're pushing the envelope in the backyard a little bit.
I got it.
That's my comment.
Okay. Thank you. Cahalan, Mr. Miller?
No, I have the same thoughts with the pool, so I think you're going to have to work a little bit on that, at least for me.
Will there be a recommendation from the board, I'm sorry to interrupt?
Well, you know, I think that, it seems like two board members. Let me see what the other board members are thinking, and then maybe we can work done.
Absolutely.
Anything further, Mr. Miller?
No, that was it.
Mr. Nerzia?
Along the same lines, you've already mentioned that you're willing to reduce the size of the pool, so I guess that's for you to tell us what you'd come back with, but I think that would be beneficial for your application.
Mr. DiMarco?
I'm good with the pool as is.
Okay. I don't have anything further. It seems like the majority of the board has some interest. So, let me see what the public has to say, and then when we get back to the board, we can talk about it.
Absolutely.
So, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think Mr. Nerzia said it best. You're the applicant, and what we can do, although I've closed the public hearing, if there's a modification, I may have to reopen it.
If you reduce the extent of the variance, that you can do. It's only if you increase the extent of the variance that that becomes.
Mr. Finelli, what are your thoughts on this?
Can I make a suggestion?
Please do.
Just based on the type of pool they're looking for, they're typically modular. They work in two-foot increments, as far as the steel panels that go into the ground. So, my thought would be to offer a 12-foot width as to the pool, which would give us three more feet that we can either take from one side, both sides, and just push the entire pool over and give us a nine-foot setback to side yard. I think that would be a little bit more in keeping with, you know, the requirement of 10. And then as to width, it's 30 feet now, so if we were to say, make it 26, that would give us four feet, and maybe we could just clear that rear variance away completely and give us 10 foot in the back. So, we'll do a 12 by 26. I think that still makes them happy. I think it removes one of the variances, and it gets us still within a foot on the second, and gives us a little bit of space between the pool itself and the freestanding garage. I don't want to go to anything, I guess narrower than 12 feet, really, I think might be too small, but I think that, if that's a fair compromise, and you guys are willing to do that, then that's what we'll do. I think they'd be happy to have a pool. So, 12 by 26, I think, is a fair-sized pool, but we have to start somewhere.
Let me go with the board again. Mr. Cahalan, any questions or comments to that modification?
I wish we had more applicants that thought like you do.
So, I would take that as a...
I would be very, I would take that as a good, very good.
Mr. Nerzia? I'm Mr. Miller, I'm sorry. You look just like Peter all of a sudden. I apologize.
It's up for the love.
Sorry. Mr. Miller?
No, somehow I think you anticipated that reaction on this one. I applaud you for compromising. I would like to see it in writing with a modification of your application, and then I will make comments on it.
Well, can I just...
Mrs. Yuli, please.
If he agrees to it, it'll be in writing as part of the resolution. It could be a condition. So, if he...
Right.
You would be approving, and let me get this straight. So, you're saying you're eliminating, you would eliminate the rear yard setback variance, and you would, the variance for the side yard would be to allow nine feet rather than 10 feet. So, I think it's on the record now, and that would be part of your resolution of what you'd be approving. And they would, they'd be required to do it, or they couldn't do it.
All right. I have no questions.
Okay. Mr. Nerzia, not Mr. Miller?
Actually, the only comment is, thank you for the cooperation. That was, yeah, very beneficial.
Mr. DiMarco?
I have nothing to say.
Yeah. Which is so rare. And I was okay with the pool as proposed, so I'm certainly okay with the modification. So, having said that, rather than you having to resubmit and waste time and money, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this matter for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And that's based on an amended application.
Correct.
Okay.
Very much happy to thank you.
You too. Okay. Item number three, this is 42 California Road. If you can give me your name and address for the record, and please proceed.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Malinsky. The address is 883 California Road, zoning district R6. So, my clients were granted a rear yard variance for their pool of nine feet back in 2021. The pool was then constructed, and in trying to resolve an existing retaining wall issue at the back of the property, a new survey was done, and it was discovered through the survey that the corner of the pool was actually constructed at 6.7 feet off the rear property line. So, that's the first variance that we're requesting. Secondly, as you can see by the green line, we need to redo the retaining wall that's at that green line due to an undersized existing footing and some cracking that's occurred. In doing so, we're asking for a variance to mount a six-foot high fence on top of the retaining wall, which would make the highest point 14.5 feet with the retaining wall and the fence. As you can see in the other locations, the neighboring yards do slope, so, you know, 14.6 is not the entire portion, neighboring yards. And then the third and fourth variances are in regard to a pergola that you can see in orange that we'd like to, we're asking for a four-foot rear yard setback and a 2.75 foot side yard.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Get to the board, and we'll change things up. We'll go from the right to left. Mr. DiMarco, anything?
Nothing.
Mr. Nerzia?
Yeah, just a question. With the issue about the variance for the 6.7 yard setback, was it the pool that was constructed incorrectly, or was the initial survey wrong? I'm just curious how that came about.
I'm not sure exactly what happened. Honestly, we're surprised by it as well. From this, I noted that on my drawings, I have to put in bold, you know, to have the corners staked and, you know, for all setbacks to be...
Yeah. Okay, I was just curious about that.
Anything further, Mr. Nerzia?
No, no, I was just trying to find out who messed up.
No, no.
Mr. Cahalan?
Yeah, I mean, I have a problem with the fence. That's my issue on this application. I mean, and also, you know, 45% variance is substantial on that setback. I mean, the retaining wall is a certain height. It's going to be built back to a certain height, correct?
So, it's going to be built higher due to the patio of the pool is higher than the existing retaining wall, the existing retaining wall steps. So, we're bringing it up all to one height, which is actually higher than the existing. And then we want to put the fence on, you know, to enclose the pool per code, but also to provide privacy for the neighboring yards as well.
But don't you have arborvitae's or something back there that are pretty high?
So, there were, but those were taken out to construct the pool.
Oh, and these pictures are really way off because they show it in the pictures. So, that's my first question. But 10 foot, so you're going to have a 14-foot fence, a total height of 14 feet. That's a lot, in my opinion. And again, I worry about other places in town with the same situations. So, is there any way, you know, your wall is level, can't your fence just go up and down to meet that 10 foot?
I mean, even with, like, to maintain the 10 foot, we'd have to have lower than a four-foot fence. So, the maximum height of the retaining wall is eight foot six at the highest, and as you can see, it slopes.
Mm-hmm. It's just, to me, 14 at the max is a big ask. That's just one vote.
Anything further, Mr. Cahalan?
No.
Okay. I don't have anything at this time. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan? Oh, sorry, Mr. DiMarco.
That's okay.
Could have had you in there. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to the board. Start right to left again, Mr. DiMarco?
Still nothing.
Mr. Nerzia?
Nothing.
Mr. Miller?
No, just a question mark. Did we direct arborvitae's last time?
Um, I would have to look into that. I don't know. We could see.
No, they, they had arborvitae's along, actually where that green, where the retaining wall lives currently, but they, I mean, they were so big that they had to be removed in order to do the pool.
So, they were never a condition of an approval for the original variance, as far as you know? I mean, I can verify that, but...
And, yeah, they're not in the existing photos. I'm not sure.
To my recollection, I don't believe, I don't remember that as a condition.
Yeah, you don't do that very often.
Yeah. We've done it, but not, I don't remember it being done here. Anything further, Mr. Miller, Mr. Cahalan?
No.
I don't have anything either. So, I make a motion to adjourn this application for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your application.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four, 22-43, this is the Overlook Avenue. Application. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, Chairman, Board Members. My name is Adama Mayarano from Community Designs and Engineering. On behalf of the applicant, Angelo O'Shawba, we are proposing additions and alterations to 59 Overlook Avenue. The house, as it says today, it's located in the R5 zoning district. It's a corner lot, and basically, this is where the variance comes into play. The applicant wishes to create a modern-day flow plan and layout that will also help him for years to come in the, you know, growth of the family. So, what the problem with the existing home is that the existing garage obstructs the, well, one, the view and flow of the usable yard that's located parallel to, there's an overlook, which is right here. So, that existing garage, you basically have to walk out of the kitchen, around the garage to use the patio, and that space, and also the view is pretty much blocked by that existing garage. So, the ideal scenario was to one-story garage over to the other side of the house, which is the left side that is facing Ridge Street, and that's where the variance comes into play. Basically, the existing garage as well is really non-functional. It's about nine and a half feet wide, so if you park an SUV, you could barely get your, you know, car door open and sort of slide out. So, in the proposed garage, we tried to, you know, obviously minimize the impact and the level of the variance as much as possible, so there's an existing chimney. So, ideally, you know, 12 foot inside the garage is, you know, obtained width so that you could park your car, get out, and, you know, have some room to actually have storage as well. So, the overall width of the proposed new garage is 14 feet, and that leaves us with a 17.35 foot setback to Ridge Street, which required is 30 feet. So, that is the main variance that we are asking. The rest of the home is conforming to everything as far as gross floor area, coverage, impervious area. The rest of the two-story addition on the other side will basically give the applicant the desired flow and function of the home. It's a covered patio, and above is an additional master bedroom and master suite, again, allowing for future growth of the family and whatnot. We did look into trying to eliminate this condition in putting the garage in the basement, basically where it exists today, but there was some problematic conditions with that. So, the slope of the driveway, we would basically need a variance for the increased slope, which would be over what is, you know, allowed. And obviously, that's not so much the ideal solution for the applicant because it's a, you know, slope driveway, water condition, drainage, and all of that. So, again, we were left with locating the one-story garage on the left side against Ridge Street. So, basically, the setback is the one variance, and then along with that becomes just a parking condition. So, most of the existing driveway is in the right-of-way. So, with the new garage, we don't have, right now, on Overlook, you're required 14 foot, so the garage is 15...
15.85.
85 feet. So, we don't have that 19 feet for that one parking spot. So, obviously, there is ample parking in the existing driveway, just in the right-of-way, but inside the garage, there'll be a nine-by-18 space, and so we're deficient by one parking space because of this sort of condition. And your packet as well, there's just a little study just to show the neighboring condition of what's going on with the setbacks along Ridge Street. So, obviously, the front yard, because it's a corner lot, the front yard, you're required 30 feet. Most of those houses on that road are nonconforming. They are around 25 foot, and then most of them They are around twenty-five foot, and then most of them have these small one-story additions that come out to twenty-foot setback. And basically, so if you see here, our proposed setback to that one-story garage is seventeen-point-three-five feet. Across the street from us, at thirty-seven Ridge Street, it's actually a two-story home, that's at nineteen-point-five feet. And as you go up north on Ridge Street, again, it's that variable of twenty-foot, one stories and twenty-four feet. So not everything that's really at that thirty feet in this house would be, you know, extruding into that, you know, setback would be very visible where you see a house sort of jumping into that sort of right-of-way, as well as, the right-of-way is sort of an extensive, right-of-way, the house that with the addition, it'll be around thirty-four-point-nine feet to the actual curb. And neighboring homes have, especially across the street, it's thirty-two-point-two feet. I didn't have a, didn't have a survey at the build department, but I measured, so that home is at thirty-two-point-two feet, so very conforming to what we're sort of proposing. Again, this garage too, to limit this sort of scaling and massing of it, we tried to scale this garage as much as possible. Left side here in the front, the garage, basically the slope, this is what you see on Ridge Street, it's a five-on-twelve pitch, so it's a very shallow sort of roof pitch in order to keep the massing of the actual variance of the garage addition as small as possible. It's also offset from the existing house, one foot on each side as well, and it's well within the required side yard, you know, setback, you're required eight feet, I think we're at like ten-and-a-half feet with the garage and along with the rest of the proposed alterations, the house will receive, you know, all new finishes throughout and everything like that. Very quickly, impervious, because we're going over much of the patio, and the back patio is coming out, it's a very small increase of impervious, it's around just over twenty square feet. But with the alterations and any of the new stuff, we are going to propose stormwater management for newly created and the altered impervious area. But none of that is, you know, asking for any variance of any sort.
Thank you for your presentation. Before we get to the board, I just want to let the public know that there were three items of communication letters and emails that are part of the public record. So having said that, let me get to the board. Mr. DiMarco, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Mr. Nerzia?
No questions.
Mr. Miller?
No, I'm going to reserve it to Mr. Cahalan.
Oh, Mr. Cahalan?
You can.
Proceed.
Oh, yeah.
Obviously, it's a side yard, it's a corner lot, right? So you're putting this, you're asking for a variance of forty-two percent in a front yard. Now, I know you can't control that because it's a corner lot, but nonetheless, forty-two percent is a big variance. And in reviewing the plans, this is an awful, this is going from a nice house to a big house. Okay? And I understand everybody wants modern conveyances, but we're just seem to be shoving everything that you possibly can into this property, which is, the owner is right, but my trouble is, you know, you're looking at a front yard of forty-two percent. That's a big ask. That's what I have to say.
Okay. I don't have anything at this time, but I make a motion to open this matter to the public, to a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Please come forward, name and address for the record, and proceed. If it's old school, we don't have a millennial in the group, so we like old school. Go ahead, yeah.
I live at thirty-three Ridge Street, B.J. House.
Can you, can you proceed from the mic, please?
Die around?
Die around. Not yet, not to scale. So this is my home. This is the garage addition, this is the rear addition I did.
No, no, not here, I've never seen this here.
Let me see that.
Of course.
One more.
As Chairman, I will not allow Godzilla to go across that floor.
No, no, it's only, only, you can change that.
Okay. Please, proceed.
Thirty-three Ridge Street, which is, basically, this renovation will affect being more than any neighborhood. In my packet that I sent you, there's some photographs facing, I know that the zoning, most of the houses are non-performing setbacks, but they also were built in nineteen twenty-third. The reason why zoning changes is because people want more free space, more view of the neighborhood, and they want to be more so part of the neighborhood. So when it comes to me personally, you can see in this photograph, this is the front sunroom of my house, and basically, that entire view, which I see on Ridge Street, is going to be completely blocked by the garage.
Can I just, Sylvia, I'm sorry if I missed it. Did you introduce yourself and say what your address was? I might have missed it.
Yes, you did.
Thirty-three Ridge Street.
I'm sorry, could you hold the microphone, though?
Thirty-three Ridge Street.
Yeah, no, can you just hold the microphone?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's what I...
Yeah, I think, oh.
Thank you.
So I know we're here only for the variance for the garage, which is basically this, and if you can see, sometimes in a visual model, three-dimensionally, you can see the impact compared to other homes and corners and what have you. And being a detriment to my home, I also added other elements of the house, as you said, I'm not sure I would turn to you.
Mr. Cahalan, go ahead.
About, the house is seventy-one feet long. There's no house that's seventy-one feet long in the neighborhood. I've lived there for twenty years. I'm an architect and a builder, and I think that, as an architect and builder and a homeowner, you need to, you all want to, like, the first thing I always ask my clients is, is this your forever home? And the reason why I ask that is because about what they want to do to it, you know, materials, how much money they spend, what have you. But applicants also need to remember that maybe your neighbor's home is their forever home, and that, in my case, is, I'm going to be living there the rest of my life. And for me to look out every single room of my south elevation or the rear of my house and be staring at a seventy-one-foot wall, in a sense, because that's what's going to be happening to me. This is my garage, that's the addition. This is the view from my daughter's bedroom, that's the addition. So my visual field of depth from, from my house to, let's say, overlook, is completely blocked by the addition. That's, that's a right, this addition. I'm not saying it's not, but I'm just saying that if you want, you know, I understand that everybody wants a beautiful house and they want everything imaginable in the house, but on a fifty-by-one-twenty-five lot, sometimes you can't have that. And when you want everything and the only way to get a garage is to put it in a front setback variance of forty-two percent, I think that's a little excessive.
Is that, okay. Well, I thank you for your time and your presentation, and thank you. So would anyone else like to be heard on this application? Please come forward, name and address for the record, please, and proceed.
Hello, everyone. My name is Angelo Schalba, and I live at fifty-nine Overlook with my wife Samantha, who is also here tonight. Let me start by saying how much we really enjoy living in this neighborhood, and we both have been a longtime East Coast residents with deep roots in the community. We are respectfully requesting this variance to create the best environment to raise our family. Ideally, we want to be able to have easy access to our backyard from our kitchen. More specifically, this design will allow us to keep an eye over our future children while they're playing in the backyard. The most efficient way to achieve this is to move the garage to the other side of the house. Part of our inspiration for this design is a house at nineteen Sevens, nineteen Sevens, which is around the corner from us, which had multiple variances approved, including the addition of a two-car garage with a front yard setback of ten feet and the house that is seventy-seven feet in length. We hope you will consider this as your view of our request for the variance. Thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? Please, name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Elisa Forgeon, thirty-seven Ridge Street. I live directly across the street from Angelo and Samantha. I've been in front of the board before with other people who are looking for a variance for their house. I remember the T-Sos who lived down the road on Overlook years and years ago, and I stood in front of a board, not you guys, but a board, and they weren't able to do what they wanted to do, and ultimately, they ended up selling their house and leaving. You know, there are young people in our, in our community who have needs that are different from what the houses originally started out as, and I don't think it's a bad thing to help them meet their needs for their, for their families. I'm very familiar with this house. My sister-in-law Nancy owned the house. There were several, there were actually two young families' owners after Nancy sold the house, and those people left because they had children that they could not monitor in their yard, because the garage does obstruct the view to the garage, to the yard, and it's not, it's not a good environment, it's not a safe environment for them to be outside playing while maybe their mother's in the kitchen making dinner. There was not a comfort level. So Liz and Matt left, and then the next owners left, and now we have this nice young couple who are really an asset to the community, in my opinion, and, you know, would it be good to push them out because they can't have a garage? I don't think that's the right thing to do in the community. You know, there are plenty of, plenty of properties in the neighborhood that don't conform. There are plenty of properties that are larger than the majority of the houses, you know. Don't underestimate the matter in terms of the size of the properties that can be in there. I can rattle off a half a dozen of them. I've lived in the neighborhood since I moved here in nineteen seventy-six. My in-laws owned the house before we even moved into it. So we have a very big history in the matter itself, and, you know, don't underestimate the matter for the size of the house that can be put on a piece of property, because there are plenty of large homes on properties in the matter.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? Okay, before, hold on one second. As a general rule, the public gets to be heard one time. In this instance, because some, we unusually will allow the applicant to be part of the public hearing, I will allow you to proceed if you have something else to say, and then I'll allow Mr. Mayorano if he wants to reply. But I just want the public to be aware, this is not a trial. So what we're viewing here is not the applicant, but the application. This is a quasi-judicial tribunal. We are bound by a five-part test. We don't have discretion, we do not really make zoning laws, that's something that the legislature does. But we do have discretion within those, within the five-part test. So having said that, Mr. Luke, if you'd like to speak again, and then, Mr. Mayorano, you have an opportunity to reply.
I don't disagree with a visual tie between your house and your backyard for your children, but I disagree with putting a garage in front setback. And also, the house that the owner refers to, Everett, is a one-and-a-half-story house. The roof, the second floor is in a roof line, not a two-story house with a roof, so it's probably six or seven feet lower than Ridge. And also, Everett is not Ridge Street. Ridge Street has twenty times the amount of traffic going up, especially in school days, and also Everett is not a ninety-degree corner. If you know Everett, it's the corner of the property on Sevens and Everett comes out considerably more than the streets on Skew. So it's a little bit different than Ridge Street.
Okay, thank you. Are you finished? Do I cut you off? Okay. Mr. Mayorano, if you'd like to reply on behalf of the applicant?
Not to create controversy or come back and forth, but other than, yeah, just to conclude what I've, you know, tried to explain, that, you know, trying to give the applicant, you know, they need to meet their needs, but also try to create a home that can, you know, sort of fit within the neighborhood and keep the variance as minimal as possible, and the size of this garage as small as possible, to the best of our ability to design homes so that, you know, it kind of can fit within, you know, their needs and capture the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. So back to the board, one last round. Actually, before I do that, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. DiMarco, any questions or comments?
Still no questions or comments.
Mr. Nerzia?
None.
Mr. Miller?
No, am I allowed to ask Mr. Mayorano a question?
Yes, you may. Mr. Mayorano?
Obviously, you know, as everybody knows, I live in this neighborhood, but I'm looking out this window here. Is there any way for you to design this to reduce the impact on that view, on the sightline?
I'd have to go, I mean, it'd be probably very minimal, I mean, to try to create the garage, you know, not at fourteen feet, at thirteen feet?
This is my question, is there any way to reduce this, to limit the, the impact?
I'd have to ask the applicant, but, you know, how much will that change the view? I don't think drastically at all at one foot, but, you know, probably there might be little room for like one foot, but again, once we go past that, then they're down to, when they pull a car in, they're hitting their doors against the wall and that kind of stuff, so.
I'm familiar with hitting your doors against the wall, I mean, I live in the neighborhood.
That's sort of the answer. So yes, can it, you know, can it be greater? That was probably the desire, we have, we've got down to a number that is, you know, is most practical, but, you know, will that one foot create a difference in the view? Probably not, but maybe that can help.
Mr. Cahalan?
I just want you to understand, I heard you, this is a by right on the house, so there's no question. My comment that it's a big house, it is a big house, but you're doing it by right, I have no problem with that at all. My problem is that this is a front yard setback, and it's forty-two percent that you're asking for. That's my issue. I'll deal with that.
Yeah, so because, yeah, get the corner lot condition, so you have certain...
I understand, you didn't pick it.
Yeah.
Okay, I get that, but it's still a front yard setback.
Yes.
Anything further?
That's it.
Okay. Well, I don't have anything at this time. It seems to me that at this point, there's nothing further that the board has asked of, so I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the matter for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your presentation.
Okay. Okay, item number five on the calendar, twenty-two dash forty-four, this is the Park Avenue application. Name and address, please, for the record and proceed.
Robert DeMiguel, architect, sixty-one, after his work at Yorktown Heights, New York, and he's having the Salzes as the owner, for a small addition to a currently non-conforming property. I'm afraid I did not bring a board, but I think it's large enough where we can make this out. This is part of the, this is the floor plan. What's happening here is the non-conforming situation zoning line is on the side yard and on the front yard. This is a rear addition of fifty-six square feet.
Mr. DeMiguel, if I can interrupt you, it's not fair for you to be fighting against, all right.
Some of the closed doors, Chairman?
Actually, that's okay. I just wanted them to clear the room so you could be heard. I apologize, I want you to be heard, that's why.
There's no way to put it on the easel, is there? It should be a clip.
Yeah. Put it on.
Yeah. Well, that... If you want, you could take the, the mic off of the stand and you could hold it and do both.
Maybe that would be easier.
Yeah, it's probably best.
All right. Thanks.
No, I think we're good.
You good?
Yeah. So go ahead. I'm sorry to cut you off.
No problem. Listen. Okay, there's a, two very small additions to this currently non-conforming property that we're proposing. One is a seven-by-eight, fifty-six-square-foot addition to be taken, added to the kitchen. It's an infill, it's squaring off the existing building. And we have a fourteen-square-foot addition to the bathroom to reverse the direction of exposure. One thing, it is a little bit different, we've actually gotten more compliant than the application, the way I proposed, in, in that what we did change is, this is part, there's an existing stair and deck that now serves the rear door. And originally, we were going to be extending this area to give like about a five-by-five area, and we decided things were small enough, we are not extending. At one point, we were going, taking the existing little deck and stair and pushing it out three feet. We are not doing that.
Okay.
Okay? We're maintaining this as existing. So the impetus for the small additions is basically adding a pantry to an old-fashioned galley kitchen, and also, the main thing is to keep the bathroom away from the food prep area, keep it toward the back. This little addition here is cantilevered, it's not touching the ground, this one here... This one here is on a pier in the corner. Again, the main thing is right here, the zoning code calls for a side yard of eight feet. We've got .4 feet, which is not uncommon in this area, especially when these buildings were built. And I could go into, I can answer a lot of questions in details, but basically, it's this small infill in the rear of the property that will not be disturbing anything in the backyard that exists presently.
Thank you. That's a good way to summarize your presentation. So I'll look to the board and see if anyone has any questions or comments. Mr. DiMarco?
Nothing.
Mr. Nerzia?
No questions.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Kalen?
No.
I don't have anything either. Let me make a motion, open this matter to the public for a public hearing. Is there any, is there a second to my motion? Mr. Kalen, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second? Mr. Kalen, all in favor?
Aye.
Back to the board. Mr. DiMarco?
Nothing.
Mr. Nerzia?
Nothing.
Mr. Miller?
Nope.
Mr. Kalen?
Nothing.
All I have is that I've reviewed your application, it was thorough, answered the five-part test to my satisfaction. I make an application, a motion, I'm sorry, to adjourn this application for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kalen, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your application.
Thank you.
Okay. Last item on the calendar, number six, 22-45, Kids' Corner. And while the applicant is setting up, I just want to make a note that this application in its entirety was approved in 2017. Well, if I may interrupt you, because you've been before this board before, you're always thorough, and you're always to the point, so I want to make it slightly easy for you because your application has not changed at all since 2017, is that correct? Okay.
Exactly.
And in my review of it, when you're answering the five-part test, the only possible consideration for the board would be, in my estimation, whether the neighborhood in these five years has changed so that you're not in the neighborhood anymore. I don't see it that way, but do you?
The only change that I'm aware of, that's different, is that the Chalkhurst Center that was there, has closed as of October 26, so they're no longer in business, and so the neighborhood is heated when the.
Okay. So if you want to add anything, you may, but, okay. We'll go to the board for any questions or comments, a man of many words, Mr. DiMarco?
It's been a while. I expect you to come back here with a college by now.
No, I didn't get a degree between that.
Nothing, no questions.
Mr. Nerzia?
No questions.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Kalen?
Other than what I added earlier, I don't have anything.
I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kalen, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. DiMarco?
Seeing another five years.
Mr. Nerzia?
Nothing.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Kalen?
You answered to my satisfaction the five-part test back then, you're doing it now.
I make an application, a motion to adjourn your application for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your application.
Pleasure to see you again.
Okay. My only act left is to make a motion to adjourn our meeting until the next meeting, which is, oh, before I finish my motion, the 2023 calendar is out, it's a matter, Mrs. Yuli, of public record now?
It has been for a while.
Okay, well, I'm not as fast as you, Mrs. Yuli. So anyway, I'll make, finish my motion to adjourn this to the January meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kalen, all in favor?
Aye.
Good holidays, everybody. Okay.